And the statement follows. We, that's FCC Environment, understand Southampton residents frustration and annoyance with the continued disruption to the waste and recycling service.
Could you speak up? You might.
Okay. Lovely, okay, I will start again. So we, that's FCC Environment, understand Southampton residents frustration and annoyance with the continued disruption to the waste and recycling services. We would like to sincerely apologise for the failure to deliver the service you expect and deserve. In particular, we'd like to say sorry for the difficulties experienced with the reintroduction of the garden waste collection service. There are reasons for this, but we want to clarify that when the service was rolled out and reintroduced, we had recruited sufficient staff required under the contract to deliver the service. The since then staff have left the contract, but we've been unable to replace them. We are operating with an average absence level of 14%. And along with other issues which have made ongoing recruitment challenging, this has made delivering the service problematic. Notwithstanding these issues, residents have a right to expect a good and reliable service. At all stages, FCC has sought to work with the council to improve and resolve the situation, and this remains the case. We are fully committed to ensuring that everybody has a garden waste collection service on a reasonably regular basis whilst the ongoing issues are resolved. In addition, we are looking at how we can adjust our collection rounds to ensure that the same households are not missed each time. Thank you.
Mr Ashby, would you like to add something to that statement?
No, no, thank you.
Not this day. councillor Baldry.
Thank you, Chairman. Good afternoon, members and members of the public who may or may not be listening to the streaming and those in the room. But the purpose of this meeting, Chairman, as you know, is for members to have a chance to ask questions of FCC Environment. But I am going to keep my remarks very short, and I'm going to repeat what I have said elsewhere, that as the lead member for the waste service, I cannot describe how angry and frustrated I am with FCC's continued failure to provide a decent service. I probably would, as the meeting goes on, adequately describe my frustration. The leader, myself, fellow executive members, and supported by our officer team have worked tirelessly to try to improve the contractors' performance. And I pause there for a moment, Chairman, to give enormous praise to all the officers who have been involved, who have had to react to some fairly vitriolic and unpleasant experiences. And I include in that, all hold of the waste team are working above and beyond. I include those in customer services and localities. They are working extremely well in order to protect the reputation as far as possible of this council. I pay them enormous tribute. We, Southampton, have had daily operational meetings, and we have supported FCC with additional staff, offered advice on how to run the service more effectively. The list goes on and on. Well, primarily, I suspect today going to be talking about garden waste, but I need to remember, remind members that we have yet to introduce across the whole of the Southampton, the Devon-aligned service, and included in that, many members of the public are not getting a separate collection of their food waste, which is something I strongly want to introduce. We, on the question of the garden waste service, we discussed with FCC the reintroduction of the garden waste service, and those discussions took place over six months. And we pressed and pressed them and had repeated assurances from them that the service would be able to be introduced, and it has spectacularly failed within six days of introducing the garden waste service. Finally, Chairman, to our residents, I can only say how sorry I am, but I have no intention whatsoever allowing this poor service to continue. I have every confidence that this council can resolve these issues with the service. And what I would like to ask members to do is to work together as one for the district and try to restore our reputation. Thank you, Chairman.
The leader of the council, councillor Pearce.
Thank you, Chair. I am going to stand up because this is a council meeting. I'd like to endorse everything councillor Baldry has said about the really disappointing and disgraceful level of service we've been receiving from FCC recently, and to apologise to all our residents, and like him to thank the officer team, all the officers who've been working on this, because they really have gone above and beyond in the face of a lot of anger, understandable anger from residents, but it's unfortunate that sometimes it's taken out on our officers and not directly on the contractors, because that's difficult for them to do. But I'm here to talk to you about the cross-party waste working group. Members, as you know, we convened this group comprising of senior members in key leadership roles, including the leader of the opposition group. Waste Working Group has met on a number of occasions since December and has worked on a consensus basis throughout in order to review the performance of the waste contractor and to consider expert and legal advice that we've received. Our paramount concern has always been and continues to be what is in the best interest of our residents. It's therefore particularly disappointing that the now leader of the opposition is turning this into a party political issue, and what we really need is that all members should work together to resolve the issue. The Waste Working Group has agreed a clear plan on how to hold the contractor to account in order to bring the service back to the required standard that our residents expect and deserve. In accordance with that plan, we have issued formal letters to FCC setting out our expectations, and we have further meetings planned over the coming weeks, aimed at seeking to resolve these issues once and for all. Members, we are all aware of the legal advice, and therefore are unable to say anything further at this stage.
Thank you, councillor Pearce. So five members of the council requested this special meeting, and the purpose of the meeting was to hear the presentation from FCC that members have just heard, following on by questions and answers. So we will now move to questions and answers for FCC, Mr Langdon and Mr Ashby. Do councillors have any questions? Councillor Brown.
Thank you, Chairman. I thank Mr Langdon and Mr Ashby for their attendance today. It is useful indeed. In their opening remarks, they focused on ongoing staff issues, and their comments about the ongoing frustration regarding the service. Now, frustration is understandable if it's something that lasts a few weeks or something like that, but a few months, that's beyond frustration. That doesn't strike as being excessively competent. So I don't wish to grandstand by any means, I simply wish to ask, these ongoing staff issues you have, which you clearly have been unable to resolve in the last few months, what are you actually doing to resolve this? What are you changing as part of your recruitment process in order to ensure that you've got long-term waste? I appreciate that waste crew might be transient to an extent, but to make sure that you're putting the conditions in place that staff stay with you and therefore can learn the routes and we can have an improved waste service. Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, Mr Ashby.
Okay, a couple of points there. Firstly, with regards to staff retention, there has been very slightly improved staff retention over the last few months, mostly among loaders rather than drivers. We are competing in a very, very competitive market for drivers, and particularly in this area, there's a lot of seasonal work which people are leaving us to take up. To try and alleviate that, we have bought in, towards the latter half of last year, we increased drivers' pay in particular quite considerably, which did ease the flow away. We have, historically within waste, over the last five years, 10 years maybe, most staff come to us through agency. That works for both parties, it's not ideal, but it works for both parties. We don't particularly encourage it, but most staff will come through us through agency. We have an agreement whereby we use certain agencies within areas of the country. In this area, we have broadened that much wider than we would normally, and basically any agency that comes along and has got staff available, we would consider taking them on. We've also, in the last, probably about two or three months, started looking at actually specific headhunting, going out and trying to find people. Unfortunately, that is an agency that is doing that for us, and they will draw indeed those types of things, looking for drivers. They have had a certain amount of success, not huge, and we are recruiting people at the rate of one and two a month. To go back to the point in the statement, when we reintroduced the service, we did have sufficient staff to cover that service. I know it's a scam, a consolation, but first week of the service actually worked quite well. Unfortunately, at the end of that week, for one reason or another, we lost a considerable number of drivers through the agency, because that was how we were employing them. And it is at that point that we've had trouble replacing those drivers back into our system. So we did have, and the conversations that we'd had with the exec team, we did reassure them that we had the correct amount of people in place, we did. Hence, the service worked. But unfortunately, for one reason or another, a lot of those people decided the job wasn't for them in the long term, and after they'd done it for a reasonably short period, they left. We were employing a lot of those staff up to six weeks prior to the introduction of the new service, to get them trained up, as you said, to learn the rounds, et cetera. But even then, they were additional staff, so the workloads weren't quite as excessive as they would be once they started the services on their own. And as I say, once they started doing the service on their own, for one reason or another, we did lose quite a few staff that we have been unable to replace. So we are trying different methods. We've got a constant advertisement out in the local press, although we don't usually use press, but we did try that for a very short period and got no applicants at all. It's on a lot of the recruitment websites in this area. As I say, we are trying, and everything that we possibly can, and everything that works elsewhere.
Councillor Birch has joined us remotely and is asking to speak. Is the technology okay? And can you hear us, councillor Birch?
I can hear you. Thank you, Mr Chairman. I have three questions. I'd like to just, a short preamble to the question. First of all, thank you, Mr Langdon, and thank you, Mr Ashby, for attending. And certainly, Mr Ashby will recall that just under a year ago, on the 10th of June last year, he attended a meeting of overview and scrutiny, and at that meeting, he and his colleague, Mr Barnfield, and I quote, "promised a final resolution after six months". You will, no doubt, Mr Ashby will recall that at that meeting, there were many problems that were to be addressed by FCC, and the council was promised a final resolution after six months, in other words, by the end of 2021. That meeting was then followed by a meeting of full council on the 17th of June last year, and at that meeting, FCC repeated their promise to resolve all issues by the end of the year, and it is minuted that the long-term solution will be completed by the end of 2021. Unfortunately, that has not happened. Where are we now? We have still many problems. Since Easter this year, over 70,000, there have been over 70,000 Miss Brown Bin collections. Secondly, there are 22,500 households not having the benefit of a food waste collection, they're having to put food waste into a black bin, into the black bins. And then on top of that, there are 8,000 households still on the old system of putting their recycled material in blue and clear sacks. So clearly, there are many issues still outstanding and certainly will not resolve by the end of 2021. So my three questions are, and I think this should be answered by Mr Langdon. My first question is, do you agree that you're not fulfilling your contractual obligations? You entered into a contract with the council, I think it was the end of 2018 or beginning of 2019, and it seems to most of us that you're not fulfilling those contractual obligations. Do you agree that that is the case? So that's my first question. My second question is, will you ever be able to deliver a service in accordance with your contractual obligations? Will we, as members of this council, be able to go out to the residents of South Devon and say that we have a commitment from FCC that they will fulfil their contractual obligations? That's my second question. And finally, if the answer to the second question is yes, you will fulfil your contractual obligations, how do you intend to bring this about? I think members of this council will want to know how and when you intend to fulfil your contractual obligations. Those are my three questions, and thank you.
Thank you, councillor Birch. Mr Langdon.
Thank you, councillor Birch. I'll answer all three questions at the same time, if I may. We are engaged at the moment, indeed today as well, with the senior officers of the council in a resolution. Because of the nature of those conversations, I am unable to expand on them at the moment. So I realise that's probably going to be unacceptable and frustrating for a lot of you, but I just am unable to comment further at this point.
Do we have any further questions from any other councillors? Councillor Brazil.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. I'll be, one of the reasons why we called this meeting is because this has been going on for two and a half years, and there doesn't seem to be any resolution. And members of the public are rightly angry and frustrated out there, they want answers. And what we've had here is, it feels a bit like Groundhog Day. We've had this meeting before, we've asked FCC to turn up, it's all going to be jammed tomorrow, never delivered. You know, what we've asked the council to do is to take decisive and show leadership, and that's what they singularly failed to do. So here we are, just a few on the short-term issues. I might ask FCC, you said you wanted to reinstate the brown bin. It's quite obvious that you're unable to fulfil that. Why is it, why don't you say that we'll collect it once a month? At least that would give some certainty to the residents of Southampton, that they know that their bins will be collected once a month, rather than trying to do it once a fortnight, and then there's a sort of postcode lottery that half of them don't get delivered. They wheel their, they're like the Grand Old Duke of York, they wheel their bins down the road, and then they've just got to wheel them back up again and they're full. They're very heavy, and it makes people very angry, and particularly for a more vulnerable and elderly residents, they struggle with it, and it's just unacceptable. So I ask you, will you go to a monthly collection of brown bins while this situation, while we're in this situation? Because I don't have any confidence, and last Saturday, we had absolutely no collection whatsoever during the Jubilee weekend, didn't look good for the Southampton, loads of brown bins everywhere, hardly a good advert for our tourism industry that we've got bins around. You know, it's just unacceptable. So I think, you know, I appreciate that there may be financial repercussions of that, but quite frankly, I'm not interested in that. What I want to be able to tell my residents is that we have got some kind of service that is guaranteed and they will deliver. I know the leader, you know, I'm not going to rise to it really, but quite frankly, I mean, party political issue, you need to get out more, quite frankly. There are people out there who are incredibly angry and frustrated, and they want to see a resolution to this, and that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to keep the pressure on and to get that out. The Waste Working Group, I went on to that, and I was never bound by the Waste Working Group, I made that clear right from the start. As far as I can see, the Waste Working Group is being used as a way to gag opposition or discussion or debate or whatever. I don't see it as, I don't think it's functioning as it should function. You certainly haven't done what I've asked you to do. You know my views on it, but we've been told that that is unacceptable. Well, you know, that's my views on the Waste Working Group. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not under, I'm in any form of pressure, or I don't feel under any pressure to do what the Waste Working Group says, and I will continue to keep the pressure on this council and on FCC to deliver the service that this, that our residents deserve. In the Southampton, we pay the highest average council tax anywhere in Devon. And I'm careful, watch my words, the highest average council tax anywhere in Devon. You can look on the government figures and that is true. Yes, we do. Okay? All right, you say we don't, yes, we do. I'll read the figures out then.
Councillor Brazil, can we have a question?
Yeah, well, I've asked a question about that. I mean, Chairman, I appreciate what you said, and I, you know, you said no statements. You allowed the leader to stand up and make a statement without any question at all. I mean, what, how's that? I mean.
Councillor Brazil, I said at the start, there were going to be a number of statements to begin with. Both councillor Baldry and councillor Pearce were perfectly entitled to make statements to begin with.
All right. Well, I'll leave it there, and by that we do, we pay the highest average council tax anywhere in Devon. And if you want to look it up on the government figures.
Mr Langdon, would you like to, if you have a question regarding, can you move the brown bin collection once a month?
Thank you, councillor Brazil. We are looking at a number of resolutions, but as I said before, I'm afraid you'll find this frustrating, but I'm not, aren't I, not able to go into those details at the moment.
Councillor Sweet.
Thank you. I think councillor Brazil's asked my first question quite fulsomely about brown bin collection once a month, so I'll just bliterate that. We need something regular, absolutely. A month, a year ago, not a month ago, a year ago, I asked you about retraining existing workers to be drivers, and you just spoke about drivers and recruitment drives, but I know that there are existing FCC workers who have expressed an interest in retraining as drivers, just people I know personally, and that hasn't been offered. So is it, have you made any attempts to do that? Or have you, you know, is there figures on how many sort of long-term existing reliable workers have been, have been retrained? And my second question is, I'm not going to be specific about an incident, but I'm just wondering if there is sort of a continued system failure of collection of medical waste? Because recently, I've had emails about a scheduled Sharp Box collection that wasn't collected for nearly a week, which is quite serious, and I wonder whether that's something that happens regularly, and obviously, it absolutely shouldn't. You know, if it's contaminated waste especially, then we've got a whole nother environmental issue on our hands. So is, yeah, that's my second question. Does that happen regularly, or what steps would be taken to absolutely ensure that's a priority? Thank you.
Mr Langdon or Mr Ashby?
Yeah, sorry, I'll take that one if I may. First question is, you obviously said that you've got acquaintances that have applied or approached about driving. As far as I'm aware, and you know, from what you said, I stand to be corrected, but we have pretty much a longstanding memo out asking for people to drive. We regularly check with people if they want to go through the training. We've got several people going through the training, unfortunately, that training is so some of that can take quite considerable time. We have, to try and speed that up, we've offered people to go elsewhere in the country to do it, because the waiting times in this area seem out of kilter with where they are elsewhere. So without knowing the specifics that you're talking about, but we are certainly, I'm not saying constantly, it's not every day, but it is probably once a week, once a fortnight, going out to people and asking if they are interested in training up to drive. We've also, and I think we mentioned this last time, we have put that out, it is not a normal policy that we would put that out to agency for obvious reasons, because we could put them through training and then they could just decide not to work for us. But we have put that out to agency as well. So, you know, it's certainly not something that we're consciously not doing, and if you've got somebody who has, you know, put their names forward, then please give them my details and I will speak to them, because there is certainly, there is no reason we won't do that. We are, we need drivers, and we are trying to encourage people to become drivers for us. Your second point on the clinical collection is absolutely not, I'm not aware of any major issues on the clinical. Clinical is the one service that has been virtually unaffected. Obviously, we have a trained clinical operative who is a very reliable member of staff, and we've kind of left him alone, because, you know, we appreciate that clinical collections are obviously sensitive and very important. So he is kind of ring fenced, we don't touch him. If clinical collections are there, they should be taken forward. The problem with the clinical collections, you mentioned about Sharp Box, if it's an ad hoc collection that we receive on a Thursday, and their collection day is a Wednesday, or they won't get it for a week because it is an ad hoc collection. So again, without knowing the specifics, that may be what the delay is. I'm not saying it is, but that may be something to do with it. But certainly, and obviously, we have a daily call with officers and clinical. It is very much, is clinical okay today? Yes, it is. And honestly, I can't remember the last time we had a complaint about the clinical service.
It was, that was, and it was specifically booked for a day, so maybe it's in the record, but that was mess.
Okay. Councillor O'Connor.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm one of the five members who called to this meeting. Public deserves to know what has been going on with the waste service, and I think public is going to be pretty disappointed with what they've heard so far. I mean, central government has got party gates, we've gone one better, we've had bin gates for the last two and a half years and counting. Now, my question was to be similar to councillor Brazil's, but again, I think people will be surprised to hear the answer to that question, which seemed to be, we can't possibly comment to a very reasonable question, but rather than having a chaotic election, people don't know when they're going to get their garden waste collected, they're doing the hokey-cokey, they don't know whether to bring the bin in and bin out, as councillor Brazil said. You know, it may be quite amusing, but it's not amusing for people who are elderly, disabled. These bins can be very heavy, they can be up steep slopes, they can have steps, and elderly people can be quite anxious. I will come to a question, thank you. They can be quite anxious about these things, but other people may not be, and they would like, you know, they have a routine, and they have no idea what is going on, and it's very upsetting for a lot of people. And I would like to speak on their behalf, because this is what has been said to me today, I've had so many emails about this, what am I going to do about it? Unfortunately, we're not, we're not running the council, and one of the things we can do is call meetings like this to try and bring it to public attention. But all we keep hearing is, oh, no, we're going into part two, which means going into private session. Us all seem to be interested in not saying anything. Now, the question was, can we not have a chaotic garden waste collection? Can we have a predictable one, even if it's worse, even if it's less frequent, i.e. once a month or once every two months? Or maybe scrap the whole thing, at least we'd know where we stand. The answer seemed to be, oh, well, I can't say. But why can you not say? Can you please, the public deserves an answer to that question. Can you please produce something a bit more than that you can't say? Why can't you say?
Mr Langdon.
Thank you. Can I just first say that nobody, nobody here, I'm sure I speak for everybody, finds this amusing, so we certainly don't. I am not able to answer your question in the way that you would like. We are in discussions with the council at the moment, because of the nature of those discussions, I am not at liberty to expand upon those topics at the moment. I know it's frustrating, but I cannot do that at the moment. I know it's frustrating, but I cannot do that at the moment. Counselor Hotwood.
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman, I don't know whether we're doing statements or questions and statements or what. So I'm going to do a bit of both. I apologize if it's not what you're expecting, but I can't change it now. The brown bin situation is completely unacceptable. And as Operations Director of FCC, Mr. Longdon, I hold you responsible. When the executives started meeting you over two years ago, it was clear from the beginning that you did not know what was going on locally and that supervision at ground level was not sufficient. You FCC redesigned the rounds that worked perfectly well previously. The new rounds do not work and never will. You FCC designed and built a new modern Ivy Bridge depot, which when completed was wrongly designed and not fit for purpose. Nothing you FCC do is good enough and the residents which we all represent deserve more. In a press statement released by FCC yesterday, you repeated everything you had previously said. Your apologies we've heard before, the staff shortages we've heard before. But alas, nothing improves. In fact, the situation has worsened. What you have said, which is that you are working with the council to resolve and improve the situation, it's just not happening. You say you cannot recruit new team members and staff are leaving. I remember speaking to it in exec briefing explaining that because of the management at FCC, very few people are willing to work for you. The reputation of FCC is such that people do not want to work for the company. And for that, I blame you. And as of the recruitment situation has gone on for two and a half years, we cannot continue to listen to excuse after excuse. Members of this council know that the contract cannot be discussed in public and nor can what is going on to rectify the situation. As we are getting into the legalities of a contract, it is imperative we do not jeopardise the council position moving forward. However, the messaging going out from the opposition to residents saying that the ruling group are doing nothing is grandstanding and electioneering. And this situation is too serious to grandstand about. It is counterproductive. Having said that, when you put out a press statement, please make sure you're factually correct, leader of the opposition. The South Hams is the fourth highest council tax in Devon out of eight, not the highest. It is not helpful to our residents when time and time again you're incorrect in what you say. Please, as Counselor Callican and also FCC, please, as Counselor Callican from the Lib Dems never has just asked you to consider, please never, may this council consider scrapping the collection of brown bins. All be aware, that is what a member of the opposition has just said could work. It's exactly what you did, Counselor Baldry, you made a statement. We need to get pulled together as a membership for the good of our residents and leave politics aside. You, Counselor Brazil, know full well what is going on in the background as you, at the request of this ruling group, are part of the confidential discussions. So stop misleading residents and tell them the truth. There is a vast amount of work going on behind the scenes. You don't like the way that a group you are on conducts itself? Why are you still on it? It's the first that you've ever said you don't like the way, in public, that you don't like the way the group conducts itself. The contract is a multi-million pound contract. And when a contract is this large, unfortunately, it is not as simple as walking away. You know that, Counselor Brazil. There is so much work going on behind the scenes, so why don't you change tack and do the right thing? Assure all the residents in the South Hams that the situation is coming to a head. And with the legals letters sent out by South Hams Council last week, we are starting legal proceedings. You know full well. I said legal proceedings as in letters. I didn't mean just letters going, legal letters going out. Okay, I put it the wrong way around. Well, legal letters going out. I don't know what's going on because I don't know why I'm not on the waste group. Someone's just said about the letters. Someone's just said. You know full well the work going on and we cannot terminate this contract in a special council meeting. There are processes that we are following, which again, you know, are part of those confidential meetings. This will be sorted. Please, residents, rest assured that members of the team looking into the finer detail, Counselor Brazil included, are working to a resolution that will resolve the non-collection of brown bins. Please bear with us a little longer. Please, residents, rest assured that there is not one member or officer of this council that thinks this is an acceptable situation. I cannot emphasise enough that all members of this council putting a message out that the council is working extremely hard behind the scenes to rectify the situation. We all know as members that it is true to, so come on, let's work together for our residents and not be fragmented. All that fragmentation does is scaremonger. And thank Chairman, just before I close, I did run everything I've said past Mr. Ferber this morning and he read it.
Thank you, councillors. I know this is a very contentious issue, but can we limit some of the length of the questions, please, while we are going through this?
Counselor, Counselor Hodgson. Counselor Hodgson.
Thank you, Chair. Very hard to follow that one. Anyway, hey, yeah, so I just wanted to say that I'm really disappointed in what's going on. And I just want to make that really clear in terms of the aspirations and expectations and the real hopes for people that we could fulfil some of our climate emergency desires, which is to actually do proper recycling. And here we have people putting food waste in the black bins. People who ring me up all the time and say, are you sure that's what we're supposed to do? Maybe we should put it in the brown bins. That sort of makes more sense. But then the brown bins aren't being collected at all. It's a complete nutty mess on the ground. And as councillors and any of us, I'm sure I speak, I don't want to speak for all of us, but I think, I would hope that all councillors here feel really bad about the people that are ringing up. Older people, as it's already said by my colleague in front of me, are really struggling with their bins. People who ring up at nine o'clock in the morning, so I've just taken my bin all the way down and it's not going to be collected. So I'm trying to get up with it again and when it's full, it's really heavy. And I wonder what will happen if somebody actually raises a liability. Somebody falls and hurts themselves with one of those bins. Because it won't be just about the money and the litigation. It'll actually be really, really upsetting because there's a lot of old residents there. And I think after two plus years of all these meetings and the fact that we've all run over in the middle of Covid over to kind of plastic box meetings where we listened to a couple of your officers there and thought a couple of years ago, maybe things are going to improve. Nothing's improved at all. It's only got worse. And all we get every day is an extra email now with a whole shopping list of all the thousands of addresses that aren't being collected. And what are we supposed to be supposed to bring everybody up, door to door? I mean, that's my question is, what do we say to our residents? What do we do while this mess continues? Because I can't see anybody answering any real questions as to how it's going to end. And I think it's not rocket science. You know, I think you've got, as far as I understand it, you've got these similar operations all around the country. And I know there's another place where they actually bailed out and quite rightly. Unfortunately, they bailed out a lot quicker than it seems that, you know, we've been sort of going down this pathway. But I just fail to understand why this is so difficult when it is just simply a waste collection service. Waste collection services, that we had good rounds. FCC came in and changed the rounds and instantly we were in a mess. And we've never recovered from that mess. And I just say to you, you know, did you overestimate your capacity to deliver these services?
Mr. Longdon, there were a number of questions, I think, about liability. Could I move to you for an answer from those?
Right.
Could you turn your microphone on, please?
Oh, jeez, I only heard the one question at the end.
Okay, could you answer that?
No, two questions, sorry. I'm just, who's liable when somebody falls down the steps with that bin, front of road waste that they're trying to haul back up? Because it's, you know, it's heavier as, you know, listening to Counselor Brazil's idea of old King Cole up down the hill. And it's, but it's going down with an empty bin and then coming up. You know, down with a full bin, but coming up again with a full bin, not an empty bin. But you know, these people of eighty ringing me about that as well as your capacity. So at least two questions in there. Let's mention Counselor Burch's questions that remain unanswered.
I've, sorry, I've already explained I can't answer Counselor Burch's questions in the way that you want at this point in time. As far as the liability is concerned, I'm not a lawyer, but I don't, I'm not aware of anybody that has taken a waste provider, whether that's an outsourced provider or an in-house service, sued them effectively for liability for moving the bin. That's the household's responsibility. As a, sorry, your final question, sorry, could you repeat it?
My final question was, did you have capacity when you started this? Because it seems from the word go, it was a mess because for some reason, the FCC decided to change all the rounds, rounds that had been operating for a long time in this area, perfectly adequately. You know, as soon as that happened, we were in a mess.
The rounds needed to be changed to accommodate the Devon Line service. We had to change the rounds, they could not have stayed the same. We have Counselor Spencer who is joining us remotely and was next in line in terms of asking a question. Can you hear us, Counselor Spencer?
I certainly can, thank you, Chair. Hopefully you can hear me too.
We can hear you fine, thank you. Would you like to ask a question?
I would please, I have two in fact. I apologise in advance for not being able to attend the meeting, but I had other arrangements in place. My understanding of the purpose of this meeting, as it was stated at the beginning, was that we were going to listen to a statement from FCC, which I did listen to. FCC said, and I may not have this word for word, but it said that they understood the frustration and annoyance of residents with the disruption of the service. I'm sorry, you don't have an inkling of the disruption and annoyance of what ward resident, what ward members are experiencing as a direct result of your inadequate services. You apologise for failures, both generally and in the reintroduction of green waste. I'm sorry, but my residents aren't really interested in your apologies. They're interested in some action which is not forthcoming. You've said that staff have left. You're unable to replace them. To be honest, Mr. Longdon, you've been saying this for months and months and months. This is, you're supposed to be a professional firm and yet you can't actually recruit staff to do your job. My residents aren't interested. They're only interested in a service. So my residents generally, and I suspect this may be true for other ward members, but my residents generally are fed up with your excuses because that is exactly what they are, excuse after excuse after excuse. And I find it very insulting when you say that you understand how we all feel as residents and all councillors, because you don't, you can't. So I have two questions to ask, please. The first one, which is very easy to ask, and I would ask you to do it at the meeting here now. In order that you can gain some perception of the frustration, could you please give me and this meeting your mobile phone number, your personal mobile phone number and your personal email address in order that we can circulate that to our residents in order that the residents can talk to the people who can allegedly do something? Now, I'm not sure if that question's too difficult, but that was my first question. And my second question is, because you're in business, Mr. Longdon, you will know that every business objective has a SMART attachment to it. S M A R T. It's a basic fundamental business practice. And just in case you need to know, T is time bound. So instead of saying, I can't do this and I can't do that and I can't do the other, can we have a definitive statement of exactly when you intend to reintroduce this service to an adequate or even an acceptable standard? So they're my two questions, please.
Mr. Longdon or Mr. Ashby, do you have an answer to either of those? I do, Chair. Senior officers of the council have my contact details and have used them. So there's no issue with that.
Not senior members of the council, all ward members so they can pass it on to residents who can actually talk to you directly.
Senior members of council offices and members have my personal contact details.
So you're not prepared to give us your details?
I am not prepared to give you my mobile number, no. It's my personal mobile.
Your business mobile.
The second question was around the business objectives with the T in SMART being time bound. Thank you for reminding me of that. When we've concluded the current discussions with the council, which have to remain within those walls at this stage, then we will be able to confirm timelines. It is not possible to confirm the timelines until those discussions around resolution have reached a conclusion. Counselor Pennell.
Thank you, Chairman. I have a couple of questions on behalf of my many residents who are distressed and including the elderly and having to put brown bins out, not knowing if they're going to be collected. We are, and even worse than having to drag them back in when they're very heavy. As members, we're informed, I think it's about 10 o'clock in the morning as to how many rounds are running that day. So is it the case that you do not have a clue beforehand how many staff will turn up on a particular day? And secondly, is there any way that you can get a handle on this in advance so that at least some information could be put out the previous day to let people know whether they should put out their bins or not?
I think what I'll do is, well, I'll just take another question. Counselor Smurdant has also been waiting to ask a question. Yep. I thought we could take perhaps more than one question at a time. You put forward one or two questions, if you'd like to put forward a question then, and then I'll go to.
I've got a question, I've got a question for both Mr. Ashby and Mr. Longdon, so I think it's best.
Okay, Mr. Ashby, Mr. Longdon, could you answer Counselor Pennell's question, please?
Yes, so the first question was, do we know who will turn up? Obviously, you know, our procedure is that people who are sick or are absent for any reason inform us when they're coming back. So to a certain extent, yes, we do know who is not going to be on any given day. And there probably is an element where we could say today, rounds that we are fairly sure won't go out tomorrow. However, people will then turn up, you know, they're saying they're not coming back till Thursday, they turn up on Wednesday. So that's why we don't do it until the day, but we could certainly, we could certainly review that and look at that. There is a certain element of that. Added to that, because of the mixture of vehicles that we've got, it's not as simple as, obviously, if an LGV driver comes back, he can drive anything. If a seven and a half tonne driver comes back, he can only drive certain vehicles, which can only complete certain rounds. So there is a very, very dynamic assessment in the mornings of what actually goes out hence. Rather than put something out and then have to say to you the following day, well, actually, we thought that round wasn't going to go out, but it has or vice versa. That's why we do it, as we do. Quite happy to work out with officers a different way of doing that, where we can be perhaps a little bit more predictive, but that will be subject to change based on the capabilities of people that present for work on any given morning. So we do have a clue, but things change. I'm sorry, the question, no, that was the question, it was about predicting. We can, we can look at that, but as I say, the problem with that is, is at four o'clock on a Wednesday, you might get one set of rounds. At 10 o'clock on a Thursday, they may have slightly changed.
Counselor Smurdant.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, so I shall have a question for both Mr. Ashby and Mr. Longdon. And I'm hoping that the one that I'm going to ask Mr. Longdon is one that he will be able to answer. I think first of all, I would say that what we've heard this morning, this afternoon, has been woefully inadequate. We were expecting, I think most of us were expecting a considerably longer statement than we had. Mr. Longdon made no mention whatsoever about the fact, he referred only to the brown bin service. He made no mention of the fact that FCC have been totally unable to deliver the Devon Line service from day one and are still totally unable to do that. And I think you should have, you should have noted that. And with regard to how we're going to remedy the brown bins, I mean, we absolutely need something which is going to stop this wretched Russian roulette of every day. A member looking online to see, you know, whether their area is the one that's going to be missed out. There's a sense of relief possibly that yours is going to be collected, but that's tempered by the fact that you know that other members are going to get it in the neck from their residents because theirs won't be collected. So, I've done, I did a bit of research online, had a look at FCC's, you know, fairly palatial website. I mean FCC's a really, really big company, you know, you're a really multinational company, a really, really big player, there's no question about that. I mean, members will no doubt be pleased to know that FCC recently got awarded a $40 million contract to deal with waste in Florida. And the thing which I utterly and absolutely struggle to understand is that as you are such a big multinational and well-resourced company, so this is my question to Mr Ashby, why, oh why can you not access resources from other parts of your organisation, other parts of the country to help out us here where your organisation is obviously struggling? So, that's my question for Mr Ashby. My question for Mr Longdon, once again going back to the website, which I spent about half an hour going through, and it's very impressive. And, you know, there's no doubt that FCC, you know, that in a lot of cases, you're working on about 60 councils across the country, you're providing a good service, an excellent service, but not to us. We're getting an utterly rubbish service and we've had it from day one. And you've recently opened a household waste recycling centre at Allington in Kent. And you've got a press release here from the 19th of May. And there's a quote, Mr Longdon, from yourself. FCC Environment is one of the UK's most trusted resource and waste management businesses. We operate some 100 household waste and recycling centres, so we consider ourselves to be a safe pair of hands. So, my question to you, Mr Longdon, is, do you consider that for the South Hams residents, you're a safe pair of hands?
Mr Longdon, Mr Ashby, two questions, sir.
Obviously, the question to me was about resources from other parts of the country. We did do that for a period when we introduced the, started to introduce the new service. That is problematic because we are asking other, we are asking drivers and loaders to uproot their lives and move to a different part of the country for a period. We did have that for a length of time, but obviously, you know, those people are not prepared to do that. Adding for item, we do have, we do have probably more resource coming down here from other parts of the country, but a lot of that is back office resource. It's not, it's not frontline because, you know, other contracts have resource challenges as well as you do. Obviously not as bad, I'm not saying that, but other contracts do have resource challenges. So, it's a matter of having those people spares. That's better, you know, there isn't, there isn't an area of the country, to be honest, that is, that hasn't got vacancies at the moment. That's not just FCC, that is other contractors who I speak to very regularly. You know, this is, this industry is a quite a difficult resourcing area at the moment. So, when we can, we do get people down here. We've had people who have wanted to transfer down here, et cetera, and we have accommodated that. So, we do do all of that. But to bring down additional resources here is not the long-term solution. That's what we're trying to resolve by recruiting local people to do the job.
Your question to me was, do we consider ourselves to be a safe pair of hands for South Hams? Yeah, so I think the research that you've done on the website will show you that in the very, very, very significant majority of the operations that we run, they are absolutely fine. We have good rapport with residents, we have good reputation, which probably tells us there's something specific here that means that actually a company that is able to deliver successfully across the country has a challenge in this particular location. It has, I've answered this question before and I'll answer it again. Is this what we would wish for? No. Is it what we expected when we started the contract? No. Should it be better? Yes, it should be better. But we, as I said before, and at the risk of increasing your levels of frustration, those conversations are ongoing with the council at the moment about a resolution to this. Because it is not coincidence that actually everywhere else in the country, this is fine. Down here, it is more challenging, there are specific sets of circumstances.
Councillor Baldry.
Thank you Chairman. Just as a matter of good housekeeping, can I remind members that there is a button on their iPads where they can silence it second. The left at the top, there's a lot of serious people, things are coming off. There's an exchange of correspondence between council and council peers going on at the moment. And every time they do it, everyone's laptop or a lot of people's laptops go ping. When I put my hand up to speak Chairman, we were talking about the clinical waste failure. Just to say, remember the public concerned is, I believe, in the room and that I have forwarded to Mr Ashby the details of that particular case. And he is now aware of that case. But since then, we've heard from councillor Hotwood, so I'm now asking a question to you, Chairman, of the monitoring officer. In my opinion, councillor Hotwood has disclosed information in this meeting to which she had no right to know. And she said that Mr Fairburn had also authorized that statement. Did he do so?
Mr Fairburn.
Thank you Chairman. Councillor Hotwood did show me a version of a statement before the meeting. I don't believe that councillor Hotwood has disclosed any confidential information. The reference to the legal letters was in the council press release that was issued yesterday.
Councillor Foss.
Yeah, thank you Chairman. Sorry for a while listening to what's going on. Yeah, I'm very angry, very angry indeed with what's happened. The thing that, one thing I will say, and I'm going to add a little bit of light and enlightenment on it. I did have a clerk of the parish council on the other day saying, yay, I bet my brown bin only the next thing was it disappeared around the corner on the back of the lorry. And that's the sort of, that's the sort of situation we're in. But as we all know as councillors, we are all more contactable by the general public than we've ever been. And my God, are they contacting us on this particular subject, no doubt about that whatsoever. So, being a businessman, all right, somebody retired farmer, and I'm more busy than I ever been, gets to me thinking about what is wrong with FCC here? Because as you've heard councillor Smurdon say, they have successful businesses in here. So, there has to be something specifically wrong with the one that's running our business. And I'm going to ask you, either one of you can answer this question, a couple of questions actually. One, have you seriously looked at yourselves and how you deal with your staff? And two, when you do have any contact with your staff, you listen to what they have to say? Because those workers are the best information you'll ever have. And I do know some of them, and I do know other businesses that do business with you. And the replies I get when I talk to them are not very confident, right? So, that's where we are. But I want to know those two specifics, how seriously you've actually looked at your management yourselves? And when you talk to your workers, do you listen to them? Because I know for a fact, when I do, they can tell me there is things that they tell you that you don't listen to. Thank you.
Mr Longdon, Mr Ashby.
Thank you councillor, I'll take the first question. I can assure you, we have looked at absolutely everything on this contract, top to bottom, upside down, back to front, anywhere you want to look at it. We have looked at everything to try and understand what is going on, when it's gone on, how it's occurred. So, yes, we have looked at ourselves, we've looked at everything.
Yes councillor.
Mr Fairburn said that what councillor Hotwood said was in line with what was issued in the statement yesterday from the council. Councillor Hotwood said that this council had started legal proceedings, I think she said last week. And his statement purely says that we had taken legal advice. I would like some clarification from Mr Fairburn on whether he authorised councillor Hotwood's statement.
Thank you councillor Pennell. Mr Ashby was just in the process of answering the second question from councillor Foss. So, Mr Ashby, would you like to answer that question and then we'll come back to Mr Fairburn?
Okay, yeah, hopefully I can get friendly. Yes, I do speak to the staff, I'm not here, well, I am here, but I'm not always available to the staff and they're not always available to me because of the working patterns that they have. But again, I'm quite happy to put something up for the staff to contact me if they've got any ideas. We have discussed things around transfer stations, tour quarry, when I have met with them, so yes. And I always have this, I have this massive understanding that, you know, we, whichever way we do anything, the staff will find a better way of doing it. And I use that everywhere in the country, I have used that here. So, if anybody's got a specific where they've said something to me or one of my colleagues where they've been ignored, then please bring it to me because it is certainly not intentional. And as I say, we can all sit and say what we think we are, but the guys who are actually out there doing the job are the experts in this industry and I would listen to them all day, every day.
Mr Fairburn.
Thank you Chairman. The press release says the council has taken legal advice and has written to FCC demanding that they rectify the situation as much as right. That I would infer is, is it covers exactly what councillor Hotwood said.
Mr Fairburn.
So, I'm not sure, I didn't quite pick that up from councillor Hotwood, I wasn't sure that was what she said, but she did, then I missed that, sorry.
Councillor Long.
Thank you Chairman. I will ask some questions. Firstly, Mr Longdon, do you accept that it's FCC that has failed? And that, when I say we, that residents have waited long enough for anything like the service you were contracted to provide? The other point is, another question, why have you not been able to prepare a plan as you've promised? Would have come forward, you know, at the end of last year? And will you accept that you got the rounds wrong from the beginning in planning and in review, and they've proven not to work or make sense? And I think that is one case where if you'd asked the operatives who've worked the rounds before, they would have told you that. And the other thing is, when you talk about staffing, you said you'd reintroduced, before you reintroduced the brown bin, you had sufficient staff who attended the, you know, first week and then lost a considerable number of staff the second week. I'd lost, a sad word to use. Did you investigate the reasons why you lost, why so many staff walked after the first week? Because I think that sort of lays down a sort of root of the problems that potentially exist in this area with FCC. Thank you Chairman.
Mr Longdon or Mr Ashby?
I'll do the, I'll do the last one first. We do do exit interviews when people leave us, whether they be full-time employees or agency. I don't have it in front of me, but I have seen it. Some of them have left because they've got better paid jobs. We're predominantly talking about drivers, because obviously a vehicle can't go out that road. So, yeah, some of them have left for better paid jobs. Some of them have left because the work is just not for them. The people that have left, it's the garden waste service that they were on and that is a service that is carried out throughout the country. So, that has nothing to do with Devon Line service. It's nothing to do with the reroute because the number of properties that they would be collecting from are broadly the number of properties that would be doing garden waste service in Worcestershire, Herefordshire, et cetera. So, it's, it's, it's those reasons. People come to us and at a pound for every time somebody said to me, yes, I'm a HTV driver, but I'm not doing this because I spend half my day in reverse. We sat here. But it is very much, you know, they do decide after a very short period that the job is not for them. And we do do exit interviews and I have got those details which I could provide to officers if requested.
Vice-Chair of the council, councillor Taylor.
Oh, sorry, Mr Longdon. Yes, sorry, I hadn't, I think it was a couple of questions. You asked whether we accept the failures in the round redesign. Given the nature of some of the other debate you've had this afternoon, you will understand that I'm not going to answer those questions in this forum.
Councillor Taylor.
Thank you. Congratulations on a well-rehearsed staff presentation. I've heard nothing different today than I heard a year ago. And I'm very disappointed because I was hoping that I could have something definite to take back to my residents. With every parish council, we're at the sharp end, to be honest, as councillors. And we get, we get this in them, every time we go to a parish council meeting. And old enough, you could give me something definite, get back to my council meetings now, rather than next year. Because it's the same presentation that I heard last year this time.
Mr Longdon, Mr Ashby.
Yeah, sorry, I left the mic on. What I can tell you definitely is, we are working very, very hard to try and fill all the vacancies that we've got and get all the rounds out. That is a daily job that we do. There isn't a higher priority in my business at the moment for me is to make sure this service runs as wide as it can possibly run and to get people into the business that we can deliver the service. In terms of a resolution, as I've said, we are in discussions with the authority at the moment. Until those discussions are concluded, it is not possible, it's not possible to put a timeline on it.
So, what you're saying is, we can take anything back. If you've got a time, I mean, is it next week, is it the week after? Because we keep promising residents, we can do this, we can do that, we're working on it. But it's the same thing we're hearing all the time. And it's very difficult for us to come to those council meetings.
I do appreciate, I do appreciate that that must be very difficult. Let's take somebody else's point, I probably don't really fully understand because I'm not there in that position. But what I can tell you is, we are having meetings now, meetings today, you've got meetings tomorrow, meetings next week. So, it is not something that is on the back burner, this is right here and right now. But I cannot give you a timeframe until we understand what the resolution is.
Councillor Rhodes.
Thank you Chairman. Frankly, I'm a bit appalled at the opening statement. This meeting was about gearing from FCC, this is the first time we've really had a public meeting in this kind. And to basically just say, sorry, doesn't really do it. It's like, what are we here for? Because I understand there's been a very cathartic therapeutic process of councillors getting a bit of frustration off their chest. But that's not what I wanted to give my afternoon for because it's actually just a waste of time. I think what I wanted to hear from this meeting was, what is going to happen? Now, I understand that you can't do that because you're in proceedings, that means you can't do that. I don't understand why we did this meeting while that's the case, it doesn't seem to be a good reason. So, what my first question to you is, when will you clearly communicate with us and our residents what you are going to do to fix the problem? In a, in a way where it's, there's no hesitation, like, you know, we've had two and a half years, we just need an action plan now that is going to work. It's, if you've got a meeting every single day of the week, surely you can come up with something that you can. something that you can give us, give to our residents and that our residents can read online and it's clear. That's the first question. Second question, I think I really want to refer to councillor Fosse's comment about listening to the staff because it's obvious to anyone who's spoken with any of the staff who were there when you took over, that if you had listened to them when they were trying to tell you at the beginning that it wasn't going to work, that we wouldn't be in this situation. So it might be too late really to listen to them because really that needed to happen two and a half years ago. I guess my question is, what are you, like, have you heard that? Are you going to take that on board, not only for our service, but also for your future operations? Are you learning from that? Because the answer around, are you listening to your staff? It was like, well, yeah, I could put a number up, I guess. It's like, that sounds like you haven't got that yet. So I, I, I would really like, if there is a point to this meeting, that it might be for that to land with you guys so that when you go back, it's like, oh, maybe we should actually prioritise listening to the people who are doing it. And I hear from what you said that you, you understood that no matter what you come up with, they'll know better. But what I would really like is to, to see that being prioritised in the future. Thank you.
Mr Longdon or Mr Ashby?
Chair, I've answered the first question several times. To answer again, I would be repeating myself. Brian will comment on the staff.
Sorry, I'd just like to ask a clarif- question. The question asked hasn't been asked yet. It's, I wasn't asking you, when are you going to clear, you know, what are you doing? I was going to ask, when are you going to let us know what you're going to do?
Apologies, councillor, I thought I had answered that, maybe not. The answer, the answer is we, we will let you know when we finish the discussions, the council. And I can't tell you when that's going to be. I can tell you that they're ongoing, but I can't tell you when they're going to be concluded.
Sorry, we cannot take questions from the chairman. Okay, I'm going to ask you to stop now interjecting into the meeting, please. I think we're at the stage where we were asking for a response to councillor Rose's question.
No, no, the, the, the other point that councillor O'Day making was about staff. And I, I wasn't at the start, but all of the conversations that I've had with staff about the service have been about the service rather than about the reroute or anything like that. So it is Devon-aligned service that most of the staff have got concerns about. That is what we are contracted, that's what you, you want to introduce and that's what we are trying to introduce. So again, if, if you've got a specific, I'm more than happy to, to listen to it. But as I say, the discussions that I've had where people have expressed, you know, this isn't going to work, it's got nothing to do with essentially what we're doing other than introducing the curbside saw service.
Councillor Rose.
Oh, thank you, chairman, because I thought I was going to speak a few minutes ago. We've got Rose and Row as councillors and I, councillor Row. I have to say, chairman, that I've not heard anything different than I heard 12 months ago. We've been here at this meeting now for one hour and approximately 15 minutes and we're going round in circles and you've not actually given us any reasons of what we can look forward to, what might be happening even this month, next month or even September. If you could tell us when you think you'll be able to get the service correct, we would be pleased to hear it. And we as members, I speak for every single member of the council, I'm sure, we have had literally hundreds, if not thousands of emails, phone calls, people knocking on the door, you walk down the street, you go into the village shop, what's going on with my rubbish collection? Why have my bins been empty? And it's not only the green bins, which we've been talking about a lot today, it's the service that was half on and half off. Half of my village is on the old system, the other house on the new system. And the lorries drive past my house, some on the new system, I'm still on the old system. And it's a crazy way that it was worked out. I don't know who did it, but they must have been sat in a dark room in Timbuktu or somewhere. Because if they bothered to ask us as local members, we could have told them where and when they could actually go where, how and when. It's absolutely crazy, all the systems, you could scrap it all, start again. I'm absolutely appalled. I've been a councillor for many years. We changed, I remember many years ago, we had one bin and we stuck everything in there. And then we have two bins and then we went on fortnightly collections, but we never had this mess. Come on, you can do better. You're supposed to be a good company. You've got good connections across the country. Well, if the last council that you took on and asked us for a reference, I'm sure you wouldn't have got a very good one. Come on, you can do better. Let's hear when you're going to get us all in line and when you can actually give us an answer. You need to train drivers. I know there's been problems with drivers' HDLB licences and DBNA have not been issuing them fast enough, but come on, guys, you're not giving us proper answers. You're just wish washing over us and thinking we're fools. We're not, we want better answers. Thank you.
Councillor Rose, did you want to come back with another question? Councillor McKay, you have been waiting quite a while. I'm, I have been doing it in order and you are indeed next.
Thank you. Yes, I, I was wondering whether I'd been forgotten, but I'm used to that. I would like to just, I, I, I'm not going to do the speechifying that, because I'm not very good at it, but the, I would like to endorse what councillor Hotwood said in the first half of the speech. I think it was, that was on the money and, and I agree with every word she said. It was a very good succinct and articulate way of summing things up. She went, then went off the rails entirely. And accusing people of grandstanding. I mean, I, she's accused me of grandstanding in the past and I think she confuses grandstanding with people who feel passionate about things and, and it's not grandstanding at all. My question is, is related to this 14% that you say that you're 14% down in staff. Gets the consequence of that is, is utter chaos within the, certainly for the, the brown bin collections on occasions, you haven't picked up any. I, I don't find that the staffing level is sufficient excuse for, for what is going on. Can you provide more information as to why it has been so completely chaotic? Like I say, 14% doesn't really, it, it just doesn't add up. And the other question was with regard to your background. I mean, I, I, I do realise that, that you have successfully operating contracts in other, in other districts. The, the thing that happened here was it all went horribly wrong during the, the conversion to curbside recycling. Can I ask, have you ever been through a process like that before in any other district? And why it is that you've got it so completely wrong? I mean, you didn't get it just a bit wrong, you've got it absolutely completely wrong. And I would like to know how you would explain that. Thank you.
Mr Longdon or Mr Ashby?
I'll, I'll answer on the 14%. I appreciate that that may seem 14%, you know, is, is, doesn't seem like a high number for the level of disruption, but that is, that is a percentage of our staff and agency who are off sick. That doesn't take into account the vacancies that we've got as well, which are quite high. So it is a disproportionate impact of the 14%. We normally are on most other contracts and with other areas that I've worked in, it's usually about six to eight percent. So we've got twice as many people off, not just sick, but sick and absent. And we've got a high level of vacancies. So that's why it's a disproportionate effect on the service because of the sickness.
Councillor Hawkins.
Sorry, Mr Longdon.
Thank you, Chair. You asked the question, have we done this before? Yes, we've done this before. We've done exactly what we're doing here before. It is probably the most difficult thing you do in collections, make a DSO workforce, bring them into the private sector, take a curmengled or stream collection into a box or segregated collection. But we've done it before, we've done it, both of us have done it together and we've done it for different organisations prior to our time at FCC. So the methodology that we follow is, is one that we know has worked elsewhere. Again, that comes back to why we've had a long, hard look at what's happened in South Hams and why it's particular to this area. And clearly there are some specific issues in this particular district. Because those, those, I'm, I'm, you know, I can't, I'm, I'm sorry, but these, these are discussions that are going on at the moment with the, with the council and the view of the position of the council are not prepared to answer and, and dispose information at this stage outside of that forum. I, I know that's frustrating for you and I know you're thinking that's unacceptable, but that's.
This is just simple stuff. How, how did you get it so completely wrong? I don't really see that that should be subdued to see in any way.
The reasons why the situation is where it is at at the moment are part of those discussions.
Councillor Hawkins.
Thank you, chairman. Good afternoon, gentlemen. We've met in the past mainly on teams. Most of the councillors in this room realise I'm not someone who actually is speechless very often, but the meetings which we have had with you in the past and today just makes me completely speechless because we're just going through the same old process time and time and time again. The contract which was put out and you won was a contract, exactly what councillor McKay has said, you designed it. It was your design, your plan, your depot, we did everything you wanted to do. We did it what you wanted to do. And I just cannot understand, which makes me speechless, how on earth you could have got it so completely utterly wrong? It started two years ago with the round ring, round the organisation. That's when it really went wrong. And my residents are furious with you, they're furious with us, but they're furious with you because they cannot understand how an organisation as big as you, but not yet South Ham, a little council like South Ham's council, yes, we're rural, yes, we've got difficulties, but we're no different to other councils you've got, not really. And I just cannot understand how you've got it so completely and utterly wrong. The contract was yours. And every time we've had these meetings with you, we're always told, oh, we're looking into it, we're trying to do better, we're always going to do better. It's always jam tomorrow, but it's always worse than March, really, we don't even get anything. It's just exactly the same all the time. It's not a very nice March, really, sorry. My best, no, it's better than Stork. They're completely fed up with you. Now, if I took a contract out with you personally, for your house or for your garden or for your car, how long would you expect that contract? Or how long would you expect you to actually accept that contract as failing? Because I just can't understand it. You wouldn't accept this. So why do you expect us and our residents to expect, accept it? Because it's totally unacceptable. Sorry, there wasn't really a question there, was there? Well, yes, there was. How long would you, how long would you expect a contract to get right?
Mr Longdon.
Look, I think I've said already that, well, the performance here is not where we want it to be, it's not where anybody wants it to be, most importantly, it's not where the residents need it to be or deserve it to be. But the issues surrounding that are part of the confidential discussion we're having with the authority at the moment. And therefore I cannot, I am unable to respond any further on that. I'm really sorry.
Sorry, I'm coming back and I've been told not to. We've heard this time and time again. Those discussions now are taking place, have only started taking place recently. We've had the same arguments by you or the same discussions by you last year, 18 months ago. It's never gotten any better.
Councillors, we have been debating this for, well, asking questions for an hour and a half now. And there is a danger we just keep going around, around the room on this. However, I do have a few more councillors that have expressed a desire to ask questions. So I'll take those. And I am a little conscious at the time because we may have to adjourn the meeting if we carry on for much longer. Councillor Brown.
Thank you, chairman. I'm going to make a genuine attempt at productivity here. Regarding reporting missed collections, and I'm not, I'm not just referring to brown bins here, I'm referring to them all. Whenever there is a missed collection, obviously, we are told at the moment that the next time that that collection can be made, whether it be brown, grey, recycling, whatever, that that won't be collected until the next normal recycling phase. So as opposed to within 24 hours, 48 hours of that missed collection, can you give us an idea when that might change and you might be able to return some kind of, go back from this collection within 24, 48 hours? Not just for brown bins, but for grey bins and for recycling?
Mr Longdon? Yeah, thank you, Chair. When we can recruit sufficient people to put all the services out that we need to put out on, on a everyday basis, then we will be able to start returning to those properties the following day. So it's as fast, the answer to your question is as fast as we can recruit the people to put all the rounds out.
Councillor Smartens.
Thank you, chairman. I've been sat here and I'm somewhat amazed, I keep hearing the fact that we're a special case, we're a special case, we're so different, we're a special case. Now, if you go, you move across into, you know, like Teenbridge, et cetera, you can't tell where the boundary is between Teenbridge and South Hams. And you certainly can't tell where the boundary is between South Hams and West Devon, where you've provided a totally acceptable service for, I don't know, how many years? Six, maybe? So, six, 10? So I, I just do not accept the fact that we are somehow difficult or special. We are no different from any other rural district council in Devon.
Councillor Hallway. Thank you, chairman. You nearly stole my thunder, councillor Spardon, but I'm told that you've managed to do the job reasonably well in West Devon. Bearing in mind the the utter failure in the South Hams, can you explain, please, the difference between doing the job in West Devon and doing it in the South Ham? Thank you.
Mr Longdon.
Thank you, Chair. In large part, we have sufficient number of staff to put all the rounds out in West Devon on a daily basis, day in, day out.
Okay.
Councillors, we've, as I said before, we've given this a fair airing. Are there any councillors that haven't asked a question so far that we'd like to ask? Councillor Thomas.
Chairman, thank you. I'll start off by endorsing councillor McKay's comments. I completely agree with the whole of the first part of councillor Hotwood's speech, which was as always passionate and eloquent. I heard councillor Hotway cooperate, I'm not, I'm, I'm not a liar, of course you're not, councillor Hotwood, we know that, we know that. I know sometimes it's difficult to remember what you know as opposed to what we know that you know, as opposed to what you know that we know that you know. So I'm sure that everybody in the room will bear that in mind. What I'm saying now though, possibly will make me less popular with colleagues on the other side of the room because we cannot not talk about politics, councillor Hotwood, that's disingenuous. This isn't grandstanding. With the honourable exception of councillor Long, every single person in this room who's an elected member stood because they were part of a political party. As a fact, you've chosen your bed, I've chosen mine. And it is also a fact that if you was draw a line down the middle of this room, it would be true to say that in the last council, people who were in the last council on that side of the room voted to send the contract out to FCC and people on this side of the room voted not to. Okay, so I'm just being honest with you. When I go to parish councils, yes, of course I blame FCC. I do have a question for you, Mr Longdon, in a minute, I apologise. I do blame FCC, but I also do make the point that actually sometimes politics is important. It is a central ideological belief of the Conservative Party to franchise out, to privatise. And it is not the opinion of the other parties, that's just a fact. It hasn't worked this time. When the Conservative-run district council does something right, the leader quite rightly shouts back the fact that she's done a brilliant job and I salute her. But when, and that happens, I'm the first to admit that happens, but on this occasion, the decision to franchise out, to send the work out to FCC has not been a success. And I'm afraid. And I'm afraid that is a political point that sometimes you've got to take ownership of. You just have to. Doesn't always work, but you've got to be man enough to say, we made that choice, it hasn't worked. My question, Mr Longdon, to you, is that you have made it clear to us that actually it's our problem really. That's what you've said. You work really well everywhere else, but you can't work well here because there are problems here. Now, fair enough, my question to you is how will a local authority in future know whether it will share our challenges or whether it will get lucky and be one of your successful ones? That's my question.
Mr Longdon?
I guess they will inform their own opinion.
Are there any councillors who'd like to ask a question, haven't, haven't already spoken? Uh, I'll come in with councillor Hotwood and then come back to councillor Ashby.
Thank you, Chairman, I just thought I should reply to councillor Thomas. You used the word man, I can't remember him, what, what, man enough or woman enough, of course.
Absolutely, councillor Hotwood.
Absolutely. Thanks for, thank you, Thomas, for correcting that. I completely agree with you. It was the decision to outsource the bins was done, or this contractor FCC was done under the previous administration and the previous administration was a Conservative-run administration. The unfortunate thing is that, um, the officers and the key member who made that or brought that decision to this council are no longer with this council. And that, um, it, we've had to carry the can for that. That doesn't mean to say that we're trying to, not trying to rectify it because of course we are, like you are. But it just surprises me that councillor Rose, I, you spoke with such passion. I always enjoy the way you speak. I think you speak from the heart and, and, and I like, I just like your mannerism and the way you come across. And it's completely gone out of my head, what I was going to say. But I, I am a woman of a certain age and it has completely gone out of my, so anyway, I'll forget that bit of it. I'll stay with that. But, um, I think it was you that said, I don't know why, I've just come back now. It's, you don't know why we've come here today and nor do any of us on this side. And that's the issue. Five members of your group called this meeting. And this meeting is a rerun of previous meetings we've had so many times before. And it's such a shame because I feel that, to be fair, Mr Longdon, you haven't answered any questions. You don't even know your business telephone, mobile, you don't, can't even give your business mobile out. You have answered no questions today at all. You've given us no answers to anything. You've said, actually, can't discuss it, can't tell you an answer, can't, 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 don't want to. And we sit here, all of us collectively as a group of members, with absolute frustration and through gritted teeth, we are all really trying hard to be polite. And we're succeeding as a group of members because trust me, we are being polite. We're not giving you the abuse that we are given on the phone or our officers are given on the phone, probably on a daily basis because this situation is so serious. I don't know what the end result of this will be because I'm not party to the confidential and I take exception to council panel. I am not a liar. I did seek, um, reference or whoever, sorry, didn't call me a liar, or I don't know what you called me. But whatever you called me, I, I've got it past what I was going to say today. And I seem to always be picked up on something or other, but the, I stated facts today of things that I got put through David Furber and I would just say FCC, please. I don't want to come to any more of these meetings. I don't want to be speaking to you anymore. The residents don't want to be listening to you anymore. They don't want to be listening to you not telling us anything. They don't want to be listening to me not tell them anything. They don't want to be listening to their membership not telling them anything. We need to know what's going on. We're not going to get it today. I don't want to be here, like councillor Rose don't want to be here. And to be, or Rose, yeah, Rose don't want to be here. And please just, either just do your job, do what we've paid you for.
Councillors, we have dealt with an awful lot of questions this afternoon. I will go to councillor Hodgson, who has also been waiting, and then close with the leader councillor Pearce. So councillor Hodgson?
Thank you, Chairman. Just to pick up on the response that I had to the answer to my question earlier, which was around what do us take of custom, um, residents who have taken a full bin down the steps and then maybe hurt themselves taking that full bin back up the steps. I think it's only, would only be fair to ask you to put a notice about this on your website. I've been looking at your website while we've been, um, this, at this meeting this afternoon. And your mission, your mission, we want to be known as a company that looks after the needs of its customers and the environment. Our focus is to build a reputation for building, providing sustainable solutions that help clients to meet their legislative, corporate responsibility and commercial requirements. We want to be known, again, you repeat yourself, we want to be known as a company that looks after the needs of its customers and the environment. And I think maybe you should add a line in there. If you make the mistake of putting your bin out expecting it to be emptied, please be aware that it is your responsibility if we don't, if we don't empty it and you may need to bring it back in. I think that's only fair to make sure the residents are aware that they're putting their bin out in the line of traffic, in the way of parking, etcetera, which they have to do. It's their responsibility to bring that in. Are you prepared to put that statement on your website?
Mr Longdon? We'll take that away, considering that, Chair. Councillor Pearce?
Thank you, Chairman. Through you, I want to direct my question at Mr Longdon. Mr Longdon, I believe that when we initiated this contract, you were the regional manager for this area or the regional director, I don't know which. But anyway, regionally, you were in charge of this area. And when you first started collecting things, um, black bins and brown bins and recycling bags on our old system, you were actually achieving better results than we were achieving ourselves. And so we thought, we've got a good one here. But that would indicate to me that actually it's nothing to do with our district because you had then contracted to, um, have a new, um, have new delivery rounds, initiate the new service, change the depot at Ivy Bridge and the rest. So if initially you could do better than us, everything you've done since would indicate that it's not the district at fault, but it's FCC at fault, right? You then, I believe, became national director. So you've got a bigger job than just being the regional director. But we have been meeting with you, I've been, operations director, thank you, well, operations director nationally. We've been meeting with you, first the executive and then councillor Baldry and myself over a period of time. And when we meet with you on teams, your body language says to me that you don't want to be in that meeting. And we have never had satisfactory answers from you. We have never understood or been given any information to be able to understand why you are not doing anything better to make our service better, like looking at the rounds again, like looking at, have you got the right number of vehicles on the road? Because if you had fewer vehicles and they were collecting another 10 or 20 houses each a day or perhaps a bit more, you would be able to have enough drivers to get round. None of that has ever come out. So my question to you, Mr Longdon, is, when are you going to hand in your resignation to FCC? Because you have not done a good job for us.
Mr Longdon? I think, Chair, you don't really expect me to answer that question.
Mr Longdon, I do expect you to answer that question, please.
I will not be handing in my resignation, councillor Pearce?
Okay, councillors, well, um, we have been asking questions for an hour and 45 minutes. I think we have, it is fair to say we have held the feet to the fire for Mr Longdon and Mr Ashby. I would like to thank Mr Longdon and Mr Ashby for coming today. It isn't easy sitting there for an hour and 45 minutes and taking that level of questions. And, you know, having said that, I will close the meeting.